I'm Deve, the clerk would read.
These are ordinances introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by section 1850-050 of the Topeka Municipal Code, by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at 1834 Southwest Topeka Boulevard and 312 Southwest 19th Street, from I-1 Light Industrial District to C-4 Commercial District.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Director Feiner will go through the issues related to this zoning change request.
Thank you. Once again, this last one is a rezone, actually it's a del zoning, believe it or not, to accommodate a express car wash. This is located at 19th and Topeka Boulevard, across from the Expo Center. This is, the site is actually part of what was Sharp Honda. Sharp Honda has moved out to a new facility on South Kansas Avenue, so they've parceled out the southern half of the lot for this new use. So this is going from, this is going from I-1 Light Industrial to C-4 Commercial District to accommodate the express car wash. Again, there's no, no issues. Just as an aside, this is a potential business that has, well, I should say that this is a business that is potentially bringing four other car washes into the city, so this is the only one you'll probably end up seeing. The rest are already need zoning and will be approved administratively. And with that, I will conclude and recommend a motion for approval.
Fantastic. Are there questions for Mr. Feiner? Yes, ma'am.
Just to double check, Bill, this is just south of my district, but am I right that one of the reasons that the dealership moved out was because of the change in the flood plain and, and a reclassification of that property in terms of flood risk?
Councilwoman Hill, I don't know if that was a factor or any factor, but you are correct that the area has been remapped, and I don't show it on here, but almost all of the area, east of Topeka Boulevard, I would say north of, certainly north of 19th here is in the flood plain now. The Dillons that, not the Dillons, but the Quick Shop that was built at 17th and Topeka had to be raised out of the flood plain. Same thing here, the car wash will have to be raised above, one foot above flood elevation. So that, that is a constraint now that was not there before.
I, I just wanted people to know that because I think that this is a brilliant reuse of that property and very appropriate. If it gets flooded, they just rinse it out.
Well, dear.
So, I'm glad to see them all coming, but I think this was, you know, congratulations to whoever came up with those ideas.
Thank you.
Ms. Claire.
So this is just for part of that dealership, right? It's only gonna, and this, is this gonna hinder someone coming in and getting the other part, or do you, do you think that?
Councilwoman Claire, the, the, less than half of this property was, was parceled off for this particular use. I, I don't think, for instance, if, if we had another, let's just say a restaurant came in, would there be enough room? I, I think so. I mean, we're dealing with, that's probably not as big of a constraint as the, as the flood plain's gonna be. But, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think it will hinder. You would normally have two types of uses on this block, on this, that's bounded on four sides by the streets, so it makes sense. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bill, I was just wondering about the aesthetics of the installation, of the landscaping and so forth. We had those installed before, and considering where it's located, directly across from the hotel and the Expo Center, things like that, just want to make sure it fits in there.
Right. Very good question. We actually did, I did meet with the county counselor who was just inquiring about the, the development itself and what it would look like, exactly what you're asking about, because they, they do have an interest. The new building design guidelines are not going to be in place, that were presented two weeks ago, for this development. The landscaping will certainly, well, the landscaping missed in terms of this particular one as well, but we do have landscaping and there, and it will have generous landscaping along the street frontages. The building's gonna look actually unlike any car wash we have in town. It's, it's a well-designed building. It just isn't the, it's not our highest standard. It would be our next highest, which would be a B design. So I, I think it is, it will fit well. Do we want to see, you know, five more car washes along here? Probably, you know, probably, we would like to see some diversity, get a restaurant or two in there would be nice as well, so.
Other questions, comments?
Someone.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, and it's time for your favorite speech again. Prior to proceeding with the vote, each- That phone up. Prior to proceeding with the vote, each member of the governing body who engage in ex parte communication with any individual, either in favor or against the matter being considered, must state this communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged this communication, you are able to fairly objectively and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record. This record includes the planning commission minutes, the staff reports, its attachments, the public comments made during a planning commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. This declaration is required due to the fact that the governing body is acting in a quasi-judicial role in making this decision and must demonstrate the appropriate due process has been afforded. Anybody have any ex parte communication about that? Fabulous. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Everybody else abstain.
We have nine yes.
Nine have it voting yes. The measure is adopted. On to item E. If the clerk would read. And for the record, no more ex parte.
Hooray!
Is a revised project budget in the amount of $969,430 and a resolution introduced by City Manager Brent Trout, amending and authorizing the project budget approved by Resolution Number 8888 for improvement project number T-131052, which provides for the 2018 fire station renovation project.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Tonight, Public Works Director Jason Peake will go through the information related to the request of amendment to this particular project's budget. Dr. Peake?
Thank you. So I guess this is the first time I'm up here talking to you about facilities instead of streets, but it is one of the other things we do in public works. And this is an action item. The second facility item will be discussion, but we're here tonight to basically request a project budget amendment for a project that has been bid. This amendment request is for fire station number three, which is located at 324 Southeast Jefferson. And some of you may remember, in 2017, as part of the CIP project, or CIP project process, we actually changed the repairs for fire stations to be renovation process, where one year we'd be doing design, we'd be holistic and looking at the station, and then the second year actually doing construction. So we tried to implement, basically what I'd say, a similar asset management approach for our facilities that we've done for streets. We're not, you know, just being reactive, but trying to address all the issues within the building in a holistic manner. And so with that, I just want to kind of, you have on the screen before you, this is the picture of the existing fire station number three. To the right is the fire admin building, and the scope of this project basically includes a renovation of the station. Some of you may remember from the CIP tour, we had this as one of the stops, an open house, and had a lot of detail. So I'm gonna hit the highlights here. This is the existing kitchen facility, and you're kind of looking at it from the dining room. The station was built in 1961. There's been some minor renovations since then, but this would be a wholesale renovation to it. You can see kind of the haphazard workout room, as well as locker storage for the folks. And basically, as we've worked with the architect to come up with plans for this, this is once again kind of looking at the, the front of the building, and there would actually be an addition there to the right, to kind of expand the footprint of the building. And then also, kind of moving inside, updating the kitchen and dining room space, and then basically expanding the locker room and equipment storage. And so why are we doing things like this? This is basically to represent how firefighting operations have changed since this building was built in the 1960s. And some of the things we're talking about today is, are making the sleeping quarters, as well as bathrooms, gender neutral. I mean, that's reflecting a modern firefighting force, as well as the expanded equipment and apparatus that they need to house within the station so that we have the ability for them to store that. And just the fact that these are 24-hour facilities, I mean, these are the firefighter's home away from home, and kind of making that amenable to them. So just some background, this project was bid in August of this year, 2018. We had three bidders. The lowest bid was from Kelly Construction Company. Just kind of the variance between the low bid and the high bid was $41,000 on basically almost a million dollar project, so we feel like a pretty tight range. But that bid did exceed what we had as our project estimate. And so that requires us to come back to you because the bids that we did receive were over our project budget, and tell you that the primary cost drivers for the increase of the bids were basically, what we heard from the contractors, the complexity of construction, basically having to build this addition between two buildings, and it's not just the first story, there's a basement part of that as well. And then we just, and you'll hear it in our City Hall discussion, just the general increase in facility construction costs, especially related to material. So we are requesting basically the council to approve the amendment. This would increase the project budget to 969,430. Basically, the way that we're paying for this, this is a cash-funded project, so we're asking for that authority from 2019 with the cash be brought into this, as well as we used money that was designated for furniture and fixtures for the new fire station, which was a cash CIP to pay for this. So that's how we've put together a recommendation to pay for it, and I would stand for any questions that you may have.
What was the previous budget?
Well, our estimate was $648,350.
So substantially different.
Yes.
Ms. Claire.
I don't have a problem with this, but I do have a question. So you're gonna renovate, it says renovate one station per year. So does that mean Station 12 is 12 years out? So it's gonna, it's gonna go for 12 years, and isn't that gonna cost us more money?
Yeah, so, I mean, some of the things that we're doing on, on the back end, is we've met with the chief and talked about priorities of stations. Just one other thing, we have a number of stations that are historic. I mean, the average age, if you take all of our stations, are about 55 years of age. But we're looking at getting those historic fire stations designated on the historic register so we can leverage tax credits to pay for renovations. And we're trying to take that kind of portfolio management approach to the stations, and come back regularly with you to basically say, here's what we recommend and make that investment. But I mean, I'll just be honest, our facilities are in the same shape as our streets and utilities, and there's a cost associated with modernizing these buildings. And so we're trying to work within that budget, but at times, you know, these costs come back greater than the budget, and that's kind of why we're here tonight.
So what does the budget, what does it contain to stop the other stations from becoming?
Sure. So some of the things that we've done, we also have a, a kind of mechanical replacement budget that's looking at some of those critical systems with it. So if we have a boiler or HVAC system that's going out, the other thing that we're doing internally just with our operation staff is to be more aggressive on the preventative maintenance side. So I talked to you about streets, preventative maintenance, repair, and then replacement. The renovation's basically the replacement piece, but it's, you know, like I said, being aggressive without preventative maintenance, so we maximize the life of those systems.
Yes, ma'am.
If there is something catastrophic happened at, at a station, or they needed a new apparatus or something, is this gonna hinder them getting that?
No, ma'am. So the apparatus are budgeted separately through the CIP, and if we had like a critical failure, let's say a tornado or something like that hit a structure, I mean, that's where we have reserve funds from the city budget, and that becomes a different question to you to pay for that. But these reflect basically our planned CIP that we talk about on an annual basis, and a budget increase to deliver it.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Peake, is part of the reason why we're only doing one station per year, because if we get too aggressive at trying to do too much, we'll destabilize the system and not be able to provide the care and services our constituents need?
Well, what I'd say to you is while we're doing one station a year, is because we may have been replacing a piece of a system over here, a roof over here, not addressing that, and, you know, in talking with the chief, the things that they need to improve their operations, have better service delivery, we needed to have that holistic focus on the station, and that's why we changed that to basically, you know, looking at a renovation of one station per year. And we'll have to retool that as, as we look through CIP budget and balance that against other needs.
How many stations can we take offline without seriously impacting the system? My assumption is we'll take this offline to do much of this work.
Yeah, I'd let the chief speak to the, how they'll handle operations during that, so. But, you know, basically, we work with them to do that. We had a similar process when we had the Seward Road Reconstruction Project out there where we had to rebuild the road. They basically made it so they could still handle service calls while that, that station was impacted.
That's fine. Ms. Claire. I'm sorry. I'm looking at you, thinking about her. Mr. Peake.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I've sat in this chair for 13 years. Finally got a new chair. But what we've done is, we haven't taken care of our firefighters. I'm sorry, they're our stepchildren. I've, you know, at budget time, I went in, looked at the beds, they were terrible. Then we started ordering beds. Some of the guys, they buy their own mattresses and bring them in. The black refrigerator, those guys bought that in. How many of you guys sit here and work in an office? And what's to be provided for you? Your chair, your desk, all of that? These guys work here 24/7. It's different, it's unique, but we're to provide these things for them. And I remember when the chief came along, and he said, "First thing I'm gonna do is tear those, those curtains, whatever they are, off of that, off of those windows" in Station 3. You remember that, chief? And I said, "Thank you. It's terrible. We've got to take care of them. We can't help it, that's their office. They sleep there, they dine there, they eat there. If you guys tour, just start touring the station, and you'll see what's needed and what's not needed." This is long and overdue. The furniture that they bring in, it's their furniture that they buy, or they team up to buy, or they pay. They shouldn't have to do that. We don't have to do that in our offices. This is long and overdue. And yes, the price has gone up because we keep sliding it back, sliding it back, sliding it back, and that's what happens. They, they take care of their facility, so there's no type of maintenance that goes in. Nobody comes in, no janitor cuts the grass or comes in and does any of that. They, they do an awful great job of that, and we should, we should be proud of that. But, but I think we need to take better care of our guys. I'd like to make a motion to approve this. It's long and overdue. Jason, I thank you for looking at every nick and cranny. I don't think that's really ever been done, and I, and I'd like to thank you for that. And to our firefighters, there's just things that they have to have. They have to have that wash machine and that dryer. These guys nickel and dime it and put up walls and whatever they can on their own to make themselves feel comfortable, or bring in chairs or whatever, and we should be proud of that, that they, that they do that. But they shouldn't have to. We should provide the tools that they need, and that's part of their tools. That's how I see it. I did, I'd like to make that motion, but I did have a question on the second floor. I, I didn't go, get to go on the tour, but I, I read in there that it said something about renovating the second floor, and I want to know, where is the second floor?
I'm sorry, there may have been a typo between the first floor and the basement plan. We may have referred to the first floor in the report as the second floor.
Okay.
Sorry.
That, that's okay. I'm just like, whoa, I thought I knew it all, but if we're gonna have a second floor, that, that, because I'm thinking of the hoses that are up there, maybe, I don't, I don't know.
Two-floor addition.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. So where will the addition go exactly?
So, yeah, I thought this-
To the, to the north? Is that, is that where, that driveway that's there? Is that what you're looking at?
If we come back to this, if, I don't know if they'll put the-
Oh, to the south, that little gap there?
Yeah, basically the gap between the, the admin building and here is where the addition's proposed.
And, and we want to extend that for, is that bedroom, or is that locker room?
It's a combination of that. There's multiple elements that are within that addition. It's not just one room.
Mm-hmm.
So it's both.
And then, Jason, you talked about kind of unisex for both, so is there, is there gonna be one for all of them, or there'll be two separate ones?
It's basically setting, we're trying to, I mean, you'll hear this during City Hall, we're trying to look at these to have flexibility, that if we need to set it aside, it's private space that that's set up, for if we need a gender-neutral facility, there's basically partition arrangements that can be set up within the sleeping quarters or separate sleeping rooms. The same within the bathroom would be individual bathrooms for, to have the ability to use that in, in a private space.
And then also, what about, is it called the deck, where the trucks are? Is that, what is, I forgot what it's-
The bay?
The bay?
Yes.
Is, is that in good shape? Because we had talked about that years ago, that and then-
Yeah, so this includes some renovation to the bay. I mean, basically that existing, the bones of the, the existing building structure are in good shape, but just modernizing the, the gate systems, I mean, within the bay itself. So I mean, there's pieces of it, but the, the bones of it are basically in good shape.
Okay. And then where they have the fire hoses that they, that they dry them on? I don't, I forget the name of that. Is, will that stay? Is that in good shape?
That detail, I don't know off the top of my head, so.
And, and where would the laundry facilities be?
I don't know that detail.
Is that included in this, in the renovation? Because that's very crucial.
Yeah, so what I, I mean, I'd just say, as the chief's coming up, I mean, he's been part of the design process, providing input. So it hasn't been us, you know, saying, here's what you need. We've had the input from fire lock all-
No, and I appreciate that, but I'm, I'm not hearing that. I'm, I'm just hearing-
I understand, yeah.
Yes, ma'am. The laundry area's gonna be in the hallway. There, there are spaces that we're moving, the larger areas where they used to have a washer and dryer sitting out and everything. Now it's gonna have its own space. We're gonna utilize all the space.
Okay. And then there'll also be a garage for the chief's truck as well?
That is correct.
Okay. What about storage? Is there any storage? You know, I see, I see where the chief's at, I see so much stuff in there, the water and all of that. Would that remain the same, or is that gonna be bigger, or?
You're talking about the parking area?
Where the chief's truck is at.
Yeah, that, that's gonna remain the same size for that alone, but there's stuff in there that they cannot move into other storage area within the facility itself, especially in the basement. It's been expanded enough for the SCBA testing, you know, the air bottle testing, where they can now have room to do that. It's not spread out all over.
So, so the basement in, in, in the station or the admin building will be expanded?
No, this, this is the basement in the station.
In the station, okay.
Yes, that's gonna be enlarging with the footprint up above. They're enlarging the footprint below as well.
Okay.
To allow them to have more storage and be able to work there when they work on the SCBAs and repair them.
Okay. Will you still have your command office? Will that be, all that will be renovated, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it, it all needs to be done. I know I'm, I'm spitting off a lot, but if you guys go over there and, and have them give you a tour through everything, it's, it's terrible. It's almost embarrassing. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, chief.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Looks like a Deputy Mayor, and I believe from your description, I could not construct it myself.
Could you do it at half price?
No.
Damn. Okay. Other comments? Yes, ma'am.
I don't know if I was, okay. I, I certainly want our fire stations to be in good shape, but I am confused by the paperwork and the funding and what this cost overrun means for the package of fire stations. And so if I can ask some questions, for one thing, part of the package says that it's an increase of $648,000 over 321, and then something else says that it's an increase of 321 over 648. So where were we and what are we adding?
So the, like I said, the authorization basically would take the budget total to $969,430 from the previous budget of $648,350.
Okay, so this is a change of 321 additionally, not 648?
Yeah, when the preliminary agenda that went out, there was a, the, the numbers for-
Or reverse made. Well, I'm just reading what I got and trying to make sense of it at home. Okay, well, that's a different hit than, I mean, I, I pulled the CIPs and, and in, in 2017, the CIP was $170,000 for '17, $230 for '18, and that was it. And the next year, it went to 321, and then 370 for the, for four following years, and that was supposed to be all we needed. And then it went up to $450,000 a year. The paperwork said that the additional money came from the 2019 allocation to do this, but it, it didn't clearly zero out the 2019 allocation from our CIP. We're still struggling with approving a budget that is supposed to be firm for the first three years in the CIP that we do every time. So the, the sheet that we got just budgeted this particular project and didn't address the changes to the CIP overall. But in the, in the text, it said that that would take the money from 2019. You just said that you were gonna take the money from the furnishings for the proposed fire station number 12, 13?
13.
Which is the first time I've heard that. So just trying to follow the money and figure out how we did it.
Yeah, so Councilwoman, what I'd say is, I mean, we go by the, the project number. So basically, this, this project number would replace the existing fire station renovation project with the budget as shown. So basically, the budget, because it's within the three, three-year CIB, gets zeroed out in the out years because we're moving all that into the 2019, and as we come back as part of next year's CIP process, we'd have to update a new fire station renovation project. So I guess maybe the confusion, we just tried to simplify it and make it one sheet, as opposed to amending that budget in a different way, but.
What are you, this gets to be two bigger things. One is, we've talked for years on behalf of the Fire Department to settle a master plan of what services they're gonna provide and how many fire stations we're gonna have. And I, I know we had conversations at the beginning of this year. I was hoping that before we did any fire station renovations, we would know for sure about our fire stations so that we didn't then later come in and say, "Oh, well, we wanted to add another bay. We'll have to cut into this wall," or whatever. So I'm interested in where we are with that master plan. Further, just for the fire stations and the budget, of those that were listed so far, and each year it's gone up like a couple million dollars, and so if this one went in terms of the total five years, and like the last one we vote, we voted on said we had, we, 2.25 million on deck, but we would, it projected we'd need an additional two, which was substantially more than the year before. With this estimate going up from $600,000 to over $900,000, what are you seeing in terms of that total cost and package for all the fire stations as we move through them?
We haven't looked at all the fire stations, so I'm not able to answer that question. But I think you'll hear during the City Hall discussion, I mean, just material prices, steel, I mean, the tariffs that are in place. I mean, we are seeing increase in our construction costs regularly, and, you know, when we think about these, these CIPs, we do these planning estimates, you know, three years ago, and try as best as we can, based on the information we have, predict what that cost is. But what I'd tell you on this one in particular, I mean, we got three bids within a fairly small- but what I'd tell you on this one in particular, I mean, we got three bids within a fairly small variance between those contractors, this is what the cost is needed to deliver this station, and so I just understand your concern of, you know, how do we get to a, a better number in predicting the budget, but it just, there's some things that are just beyond our ability to forecast.
Well, it was clear that what you did was you did a great job, and it was tight, and the bids came in close to what your estimate was, but it was also probably by the time it got done, three times as much as back when, maybe even just two years ago, people had estimated, so what you did was added a lot of features and improvements that hadn't been contemplated the first time, right?
We, we want to make sure, like I said, that we're systematic in these renovations, so that, you know, the dollars you approve and give us are invested wisely, so that these buildings do serve us for a long period of time, and then, like I said, the other piece of that, that you don't see in here, the discussion, is just about the operations and the things we're doing on asset management for preventative maintenance, and starting to build that forecast, okay, we buy a water heater, what's the life cycle of that water heater, and are we budgeting appropriately to replace that when it wears out? Or a larger mechanical system boiler, and, you know, we've not had that level of detail to provide to you, and we did it on the streets, we're taking that same approach with our facilities, so, you know, it just, we're gonna continue to have these conversations about our facilities budgets, about it's gonna cost more than what, what we're showing if we're gonna be making good decisions about investing in our facilities.
If I may clarify, then, this said that you took four hundred and fifty thousand from 2019 in order to, to make the numbers here, yet if, if in fact that three twenty-one is the number, then we didn't need all of it, I'm just trying to make the, to figure out the numbers, we, we didn't need it all from there, and then you also said something about taking a furniture budget from a different project, and I don't know how much that was.
Yeah, Councilman, I just, what I would tell you is, we, we, uh, put, this is the budget authority needed based on the expenses, and I know I'm not, not being clear, but it just, I thought I was trying to make it as simple as possible by giving you one sheet, and I failed to do that, so...
I think you are about your project, I'm just trying to figure out how much money we took away from the other prospective fire station projects, and I'm having trouble, and maybe that's, maybe you're not the right person to ask.
Now, do you know the answer on that, or I have the answer on the other?
Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman Hiller, I'll, I'll try to clarify as best I can, I've heard it fairly clearly from Mr. Peak, but I, I think the answer is, we took the amount we needed to get us the budget authority that we think we need for this project, bearing in mind, as, as Mr. Peak said, that we predict these things three years out, and even now, with a fairly firm price number, things have the potential to change, as volatile as the market is, which, uh, you know, I'm kind of setting the stage, we're both setting the stage for the City Hall project, because that's a, that's a lot of this part of the discussion, but, and, and not to be defensive about it, but we predict these things three years in advance, and we bring you one or two amendments a year, so I think that's a fairly good track record in terms of being able to, we don't want to overestimate and get more money than we need, but we also don't want to underestimate, we try to hit the sweet spot, and I think overall, we do a pretty good job of that. Short answer to your question is, we've taken the money we need from the furnishings for Fire Station thirteen to complete the budget authority that we think we need.
Okay.
That's it.
That was new news, and that's not what this text said, so I got lost, and partly, I'm trying to figure out if, if, if all the other station costs are likely doubled, then we've got some issues about in future CIP, where that money's gonna come from.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, um, yes, I agree, I think that as we look at what we're looking at for next year's CIP, we're going to be taking a hard look at, especially, uh, any construction project that we do, taking these factors into consideration as we move forward with our estimates, um, we're in a different world than we were three years ago when we thought we were, when we were looking at doing this project, and so I think that is what we're learning from, and we will adjust our budgets accordingly for projects, we may even have a project that was looked at last year and is in, in 2020's budget that may need to be modified based on these new numbers, so we'll do that, we'll take that, and then we'll have to massage what else we have the authority to do within the budget. Um, regarding the issue of the long-term strategic plan related to the fire department, um, we're taking a look at that, the, the work that was done on this particular fire station, this fire station is not one that we consider we can do without, this is one we need, it's one of the most busy stations that we have, and so for us, this one is a no-brainer, this is one that needs to be done, it will always be around, more than likely, and so for us, as we look at that, even though we don't have that strategic plan part completed yet, uh, we are working on it, I'm looking at receiving a response information, time information from the fire department, when that study's complete, then I'll be able to move forward with looking at what utilization we have in, in regards to all of our fire stations, and determine what station we would need to, uh, is best to pull offline, and which, where location we would have for our next fire station. So that kind of information is something we're looking at in the future, but for this particular discussion, this is one that we feel we're comfortable moving forward with, as it stays in our system.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Clear.
I'm sorry.
Gosh.
Whoever.
I'll get your name one of these days. Ms. Ortiz, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Clear. Um, did I hear you say, Doug, we're taking this from Fire Station thirteen? Some of the funding, or the funding?
Deputy Mayor and Councilwoman Ortiz.
Ortiz, did you, did you put the O there?
I did.
Okay.
Or I tried to. That's correct, we have, as you know, we have budget authority for that station, and so we essentially borrowed that money from ourselves in the future, and, and as the city manager said, then, as we move forward with other station projects, we'll have to make sure that we figure out how to pay for those appropriately, and have a, a better budget for you.
Thank you, that, that hurts, that hurts me, number nine, you over there?
Ten-four.
You don't have a fire station in your district.
I do not.
And that hurts me to hear that we're taking that money, and we're not even gonna, you know, you know, put that there, we had the land and nothing to do with here, it was all political, and, and the land went back, but that really hurts me when I think about all the new development that's going on in District Nine, and I think about that fire station would have been excellent across from Security Benefit and Life and all the children that are there, so that, that really hurts, that really hurts, I hope we can find money, and we'll remember this conversation, to find money, to figure out where we need to put a station, I cringe every time I hear about it, every time I hear about it.
That's an important conversation that we're gonna have to have with our constituents, and it, it costs money to deliver these services, and these services get more and more expensive every year, and we haven't raised our ability to generate more revenue in years to do that, so, you know, that leaves us with two choices, we either raise taxes, or we cut services, and that's a difficult conversation that in the next couple of years, this council's gonna have to have.
Or generate revenue.
And we can, we can generate more revenue, um, but that's, that, that's probably not gonna be a reality in the time we need to get a fire station in your district, so, uh, with that, there is a motion and a second, um, are there other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote yes, opposed, vote no?
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
I will say, the money to build the, the Fire Station thirteen is still allocated, so we are working on that project, and it will become a reality at some point, so it, it, it is an issue relative to the, the furniture issue, but the general construction money is still in the budget for that item, hasn't been, authorization is still there, so we're still continuing to work on that project, once we have the information that we need, we'll be able to move forward with figuring out where to station that, so it is something that will, will get, will get done.
Yes, ma'am.
But I thought Doug said that was from station, the three hundred was from station thirteen?
Right, but we're talking about the furniture fund of that, and not the actual construction project of that, so as we look at timing relative to the budget, we would be able to work through the issues of putting that money back into the budget in order to buy the furnishings that would be needed once the project was complete.
That makes me feel a lot better, I'll be able to sleep tonight, thank you, city manager. Number nine, did you get that?
I got it.
Okay.
You all are on fire tonight, and that's a joke, people, come on, all right, all those in favor, vote yes, opposed, vote no? No, we're not voting on my jokes. Uh, yes?
We have nine yeses.
Nine having voted yes, everyone approves my jokes. I'm just falling flat this afternoon, my gosh, okay, uh, on to non-action items, if the clerk would read.
A is just an update on City Hall renovation project and discussion about future project budget amendment.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, tonight, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber will kick this off regarding some initial comments, and then we have some other speakers that will provide information to the governing body, Doug?
Uh, Mr. City Manager, Deputy Mayor, thank you, um, so, we've got ourselves warmed up for budget amendment discussions, I think we're ready to move forward, um, our goal this evening is to, uh, just kind of want to let you know what we intend to do, and, um, my role is to kind of get us kicked off and talk about a couple of items related to the project, and then Jason will, will continue his, uh, conversation about asset management and facility management, continuing to echo the themes that he raised in the last discussion, which, which I would agree with him completely, that our facilities are much like our streets and water lines, in that, uh, they've been long neglected, and then Vance Kelly from Trainer Architect has a video and some slides that he's going to walk through with you, and then Jeff White is, uh, hiding in the back of the room, and he'll be available to answer, uh, any sort of financial questions that, that you might have. Our goal tonight is not to sell you on the project, uh, it's to give you an update on where we're at, I think we have a compelling story, and I think it's a good project, but our goal isn't to try to talk you into anything, our goal is to give you information so that you can make an informed decision, um, so I'm going to start with a little bit of an anecdote, just a real quick one. Uh, I, I started with the city in April of two thousand fourteen, April ninth, to be exact, two thousand fourteen, and on April tenth, I was on the second floor noticing a horrid smell, and wondering what the heck was going on, and it turns out, we had a, a bad sewer vent pipe, and so started asking about it, and, um, everybody's like, yeah, it really stinks, doesn't it, it's terrible, but why aren't we doing anything about it, well, it's too expensive, we don't need to address that, and that, and that's not to cast dispersions on anyone, that's just to say that was a bit of our attitude related to facilities as recently as a couple, four and a half, four and three-quarters years ago, um, now we want to take a much more holistic approach and try to, try to stop kicking the can down the road, so that's part of, that's part of the rationale for this project. In, in a conversation with one of you just this afternoon, um, you asked me, how the hell did we get here, and I think, I think that's appropriate to repeat, because it's, it's really the question, I'm sure, that's on everybody's mind, right, raise your hand if you weren't shocked by what you saw in the packet. Weren't shocked, I think, I think most of us were, um, so one of the things we want to talk, I gotta ask a more polite version by Tiernan, I guess she, she left already, of that same question, also this afternoon, um, and it's a good and fair question, and we want to try to, to walk you through, um, actually, how the hell we got to where we're at with this project, and, and part of it is, I'll just sort of set the states for Jason to come in, but part of it is, when we, when we started looking at this project, we looked at a lot of other city halls, and many of them slapped on a new coat of paint, and put down some carpet, and called it a renovation. We wanted to think much more broadly, we wanted to make sure we maximized efficiencies with our departments, for example, in the new plan, we have human resources and finances sharing a floor, that makes a lot of sense to us, because they share so many tasks in between them, uh, we have municipal court coming over to this building, to the city hall side of City Hall, uh, it makes more sense from a workflow, it makes more sense for them to be, uh, close to probation, so they're not having to go back and forth, so we wanted to do those types of things, um, we wanted to make sure we are investing in our showcase building for the city, we looked back to when this building was, was built in nineteen forty, so whatever that is, seventy-eight years ago, and, um, there were some really great newspaper articles talking about how this is a showcase building, and it's a building that all of Topeka can be proud of, and I'm not suggesting it's not a building that we can't all be proud of, but I think we could do a lot to make it a new and modern office environment that we could all indeed be proud of, uh, but as, as Jason said in his comments on the previous item, those things come with a price tag. Finally, we wanted to make sure that we were making our own connection to the downtown area, you know, there's a lot of talk and, and investment, and it's all a great thing in downtown, and we wanted to make sure that, as a city staff, we were doing our part to help invest and facilitate, uh, some of the great things that are happening downtown. And I guess the last thing I would say before I turn it over to Jason is that it's, it's a fairly important to us recruitment and retention strategy, from having a, a nice place that folks can work and, and come every day and, and be proud of where they're working, we're, we're recruiting for a finance director right now. I certainly don't want to suggest that it's going to deter people from coming here, but if we take them into where Nikki's office was, it, it's not the kind of place that we really want to show off for folks, uh, I mean, it's got a plastic drop ceiling and, and paneling, and it just, it doesn't, in my opinion, present two doors, one random door into a hallway, and then another door, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a reflection of how the building's been cobbled together over the last seventy-eight years, so I will stop talking unless you have questions at this point, and turn it over to, uh, Jason.
I just have one question, this, a constituent had asked me, um, why is it appropriate to do City Hall before we take care of the fire department, the police department?
Deputy Mayor, I think my answer would be, just like we prioritize streets and water lines and all of our other infrastructure, it's not so much a matter of doing one over the other, we have a lot of facilities, whether it's public works, or utilities, police, fire, and we're trying to do work on all of those, I mean, I suppose we could just say, well, we're only gonna do one department at a time, but I don't think that makes sense, I think it makes sense to spread our efforts over a number of facilities, so that we can try to gain ground.
And I'm not looking for an answer, you know, a wrong answer, right answer, that was just a question proposed to me, and, you know, I didn't have a, a good answer for it.
Right, and besides, Doug's comments are spot on, but the other thing I, you, we need to remember is that much of this is related to issues that we had with our heating and cooling systems, that kicked it off, and so when we looked at it, yes, putting this in front of maybe some other locations, this was an opportunity that as we looked at work that needed to be done, it made sense to do the additional work to renovate the building as well, um, not tear apart something, cobble it back together, take advantage of the fact that we're already doing some of those activities in order to be able to, uh, do additional work in order to fix up and utilize the building in a better way.
Yeah, if you have to take it apart, you might as well put it back together the right way.
Correct.
We, we've really focused on that in our streets, and people have noticed that we're doing things at the lowest level first and working back up, so that makes sense to me, uh, are there other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
At this point, can you tell me, um, at this point, had, what, what work has been done in regards to, we had the first, the first eight point two million, and then now we're asking for the other eighteen, eight point nine, what, what work has been to this point? Has there been any work that started, been done, and if so, what, what would that be?
Councilman Lesser, Deputy Mayor, there's, there's been a number of items done under the budget authority that we have, uh, a fire line from Quincy to the building failed, and so that was part of the replacement, certainly, there's been, uh, under the project authority, there's been design work and some assessments, we did a pretty intensive, uh, spades, space needs analysis, and an ADA assessment of not only this building, but the Holiday Building, to try to understand if there are folks from the Holiday Building that could come over here, or people from here that could go to the Holiday Building.
So studies, I'm hearing you, studies, design studies, architectural, drawing, all those type of things.
The, the fire line is, is certainly a tangible something, um, and the, the biggest tangible thing that's... The fire line is, is certainly a tangible something and the, the biggest tangible thing that's happened right now is the chiller work that's taking place, not literally as we speak, but every day. I mean, that project is underway.
Is that why it's so cold outside? The chiller's leaking?
Which, which was also not, not anticipated as part of the original project scope, so.
So, roughly, at this point in time, do you have a rough estimate of how much has been spent?
Roughly, yeah. Spent or encumbered, so I would include the chiller work as encumbered, I would say 2.6 million.
What, at that, this point with, with the numbers coming back as they are, have, have we done any, took into consideration or look at, looked at any other options in regards to a different building, a different location? Have we looked at different options such as that?
Deputy Mayor, Councilwoman Lesser, certainly, I'll give you sort of a generic answer, but as you get into renovation of an historic building, that brings some unique challenges with it. It's been our intention to maintain our place in this building and that's, that's been the project goal. So, in terms of looking at other spaces or trying to construct something new, that hasn't been anything we've explored at this point because the project was originally and continues to be to, to renovate the historic city hall.
So, then based on the numbers that have come here, which are coming back, which 50, you know, 50% higher, you know, double actually, double actually what, what we estimated. Are we now taking a step back as far as staff in now evaluating whether there's any other options in regards to whether renovation is the proper avenue to go in regards to the project?
Councilman Lesser, we have not, but I would, I would give you this caveat. Part of what we wanted to do this evening was gauge this body and, and understand the comments we got from you. We suspected we might get some advice or direction on how some of our next steps might look and so we certainly haven't made any of those choices until after the discussion this evening.
Have you done any looking, or do we have any, one thing, a little troublesome in looking at it is, I don't know that it's, it's right to say that our numbers are coming in, you know, double when the plans, plans now have been modified from what we initially first talked about and that's a little troubling to me.
Well, and that's part of the analysis that we did relative to the project. As we looked at the space use and the best ways to handle it, yes, there were parts of this that are, were not in the initial charge related to the renovation of city hall. But that's part of the reason that we're at this position. We're looking at these as being opportu, these changes as being opportunities for additional adds to the construction project. And so, with the direction that we receive, we can then determine whether or not that's something that's included in the project or we go back to focusing on what is the core part of the project, which was renovating the main city hall and doing the best we can to make the changes regarding the renovation of those parts within the first, second, third floor and basement of the main part of city hall and not looking at other changes that were considered regarding court and city, the city council chambers and other considerations. And so, with that guidance, we can make changes with regards to what we would need in order to, to amend the project. Construction costs have gone up, but the other changes are a portion of the additional. You're correct.
There again, though, that, that's the, the same question I have is, is it fair to say that, that, that the project costs have increased when we've added to the project that we approved when we did the CIP? I don't think that's accurate to say.
Both, both are accurate. The project costs have increased based on the construction costs increase that we've seen, also different parts such as the maintenance that's going to be required, the work that's going to be required outdoors is much greater than was originally anticipated based on the analysis.
And how is that? It says an assessment of exterior stonework showed 50% increase in work needed compared to what was anticipated. I mean, do we have more stone, we don't have more stone than we did before, do we?
No, but the amount of work that's required to be done to bring it up to the standard for repair.
Why is that different now than it was when it was evaluated the first time?
Councilman Lesser, maybe my role in the presentation was maybe to help you understand how we got to expand its.
I just want my question answered right now. I don't need an explanation. My question is, was there more stonework that needed to be done or why are we 50% increase in that? Was there an error that was made in an initial estimate?
So, the, the initial estimate, we did it basically a very high-level programming assessment in 2016 to kind of build a, a planning scope for this project that turned into that budget. And that was a ground-level assessment, you know, basically someone walking around the building trying to estimate. As part of this project, the design team actually got on a lift and analyzed every piece of stone on city hall. And as they looked at that, the, the amount of stone that was originally identified exceeded, or, you know, exceeded it with that detailed level assessment versus a planning level assessment.
So, what I'm hearing you say is the first estimate that was done was based on creating and bringing to us an $8 million budget, but the stone portion was done from people looking from the ground and gets it on what needed to be done. Is that what you're telling me?
What I would say is, you know, it's, it's like many things. We start with a planning level analysis.
I'm talking about the stone right now. I'm asking you about the stone.
Yes, sir, I understand. I'm talking about our process and our process is to invest in that planning level study to give us a budget that we can then come back to with CIP. And yes, that was done from a not as detailed analysis that was done as we got into design work. So, that's accurate.
Did I miss, did I not hear you correctly? I thought you said it was initially done by on the ground, walking around, looking at what the needs they thought would be for the stone. Is that what you said?
With the initial assessment, yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, how much?
I'm not, I haven't, wasn't finished. Oh.
Okay.
My, my next question is, is in regards to, again, at this point in time, have we taken an evaluation of looking at when the cost comes up this much higher than what was initially anticipated? And I keep hearing that construction costs are up, construction costs are up. Maybe renovation of this building isn't the best thing to do. I keep hearing costs are up. I'm looking at our, our permit, permit, you know, items here for the, the third quarter and Cyrus Hotel completion is $17.5 million. Federal Home Loan Bank, $12.4 million. We're asking for $17 million now for the renovation of a project. I keep hearing the world we're living in is, is the construction costs are up. Well, these are the, this is, was their, it's their cost. So, there again, I want to know is, are we going to take a solid look at determining whether or not spending $17 million on this building is the best thing moving forward economically?
I would make one quick comment. I can tell you from personal experience that renovating old buildings costs twice as much as it does to build new. How much of that will we get back in historic tax credits and does that offset a significant chunk of the cost?
Deputy Mayor, we would estimate that by the end of the project, if the entire project were done, we could get just south of $3 million in tax credits. To, to Councilman Lesser's question, I, I would just again say that we haven't taken any sort of look at all at new construction. Again, the project was renovation of the building and we wanted to give you an update as to where the project stood, understanding that we would likely get feedback and, and guidance as to what some of our next steps might be. But at least previous bodies have been committed to remaining in our historic city hall and so that's the assumption under which we are operating.
Yes. That was the initial charge related to the project was to look at the renovation of this building. As, now as we look at these numbers, that is something that's concerned. So, therefore, we can look at, we can definitely look at that and it is, if, if we do not as a governing body feel that staying and doing the renovations in this building is appropriate, looking at construction in another location is definitely feasible. There are many communities that have done, it depends on our attachment to this building and whether or not it is a building that we want to continue and go forward and renovate for this cost. What is the policy that we want to have? Do we abandon the building and go somewhere else or not? And we can present that information so you have a ability to compare the costs related to new construction versus, versus old, doing the renovation.
How much of this work would have to be done anyway for T-PAC to remain operational?
I don't have that information.
Because that, that would be another, you know, if, if city hall isn't here, we still have, would have to do some of the heating and cooling work, if I'm understanding, because those systems are tied across both facilities. So, that would be something else to consider as part of that. Ms. Clear? The right Clear, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ortiz.
Okay, a few questions. The 2.6 million that has been spent, is that going to stay or are we tearing that up and have to do something else? Will we lose that investment?
So, what I would say is no, I mean, the general answer is no. The chiller and the cooling towers that we've already purchased are bean-sized for renovation of the building and supporting that. So, I mean, that's existing cost. The, the piece that you may lose depending on how you go with the decision is the amount we've invested in design. We're at basically 50% design documents. So, if council chooses to go a different direction, that money we spent, you know, is already sunk cost. But that's kind of like Deputy City Manager indicated, we're looking for feedback because we're kind of at a check-in point. I need feedback for how we move forward on this.
Well, I have been in my house 35 years and I've renovated it 15 times. I can't imagine being in one building 38 years and not touching it. I mean, I think, I think this is needed. I think if we want to be a progressive community, we need to do this. And I also think the building itself to, to match downtown, like you said, with the historic feel, needs to stay. I, I would hate to see us go to a new building and lose that, what we're trying to keep, you know, in our city is the historic. And I always hate it when historic buildings are tore down just because it's cheaper to build new. I mean, so, I, I, I mean, it's sad that we waited this long to do something, but we did. It is what it is. And I, I think now is the time, if we can do it, now is the time to do it. Thank you.
Well, if our costs have doubled here, we're still doing better than the state of Kansas. When they went to renovate the Capitol, it went from 90 million to 300-something million, so it could be worse. Mr. Mays?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I, so, there's a lot to process here. I don't know that, I, I don't think anybody was suggesting that we tear down city hall. There have been a lot of other communities that have moved away from an, an old building like this and repurposed the building in other ways. Believe the city of Wichita's old city hall is now a museum. I know there are others, city halls that have become humanitarian centers where they have nonprofits. Just because our government is not in city hall does not necessarily mean we have to tear the building down. We can preserve a historic building and, and modernize our facilities so that our government runs more efficiency, efficient. I, I, all I know is, I mean, when I heard this the other day, I, my initial reaction was, "No, no, no." And every constituent contact that I've received thus far has been, "No." I have not heard one person say, "Go ahead and proceed with $16 million renovation of city hall." And if those people are out there, I'd like to hear from them and I'm sure everyone else up here would as well, but it, it's a hefty price tag. And I, I know when I, when I think of historic buildings in Topeka, I'm a native Topekan, so, you know, I'm familiar. And we think of the Brown v. Board sites, Sumner Monroe, we think of the Capitol building, we think of Topeka High. I, I never hear city hall mentioned in the conversation. I don't know that it's a building that, that our city is, you know, it's not a shining example, I don't think. But perhaps I'm wrong, perhaps there's other people that feel differently, but I, I'm not opposed to looking at other options. I just want to put that out there. But I think spending $16 million on this is, is excessive for what it's worth. Thank you.
Other comments? Ms. Heller?
I should probably throw in a short one. I, I was surprised at how much additional money was stated as the figure once, once that happened just this week. And, and was curious what people would think. So, I put it out on my Facebook page only about two days ago, thinking, "Okay." And the, the response was almost unilaterally positive. "Yes, do it. We should, we should take care of that." So, I can keep counting, but I, and I was a little surprised. So, for what that's worth.
I think the unfortunate reality is if we're not in this building, the governing body or the government of Topeka is probably not in downtown. Because I, I don't know that we could build something in downtown that would fit our needs. So, we're, we essentially have to move out of downtown and then I believe that would be the collapse of T-PAC. Because they don't have the wherewithal to fund this building without us cohabitating with it. So, that's another aspect to consider, then what happens to that? So.
Just to follow up with that, then, you know, I do think that, that with, as with any big project, the issue is where's the money going to come from? And, and, and it, it seems to enter into anybody's conversation or their thoughts about getting comfortable with something. So, I, I'm eager to see and discuss the, the proposal today, but I do think that, you know, if we wanted to proceed at all, being able to do a deep dive pretty soon. Because I, I disagree with Brendan. I don't think we need to raise taxes. I think it's some work to come up with efficiencies. And, and,
Never said that.
And, and economies and make the dollars that we have go, or perhaps do, do sales taxes issues just for development of special projects or buildings. We haven't really had that conversation about that. But I, I think first to kind of understand, this is really a great start in the conversation about what we should do. And, and if it took the, the master plan to kind of provoke the conversation and get us looking at the full possibilities, I appreciate it and I hope we can go from there.
For the record, I've never said raise taxes. I've said you either have to cut services or raise taxes if you're not using your money as efficiently as you can. And I think we have a good team that's using it as efficiently as we can. I would challenge you to find the $18 million if you think you can. Ms. Clear?
I think you need to raise, well, getting back on the taxes, you know, everybody needs a raise. And we get raises, you know, well, we not, but in normal jobs, you get a raise every year, except the state. And it's just like the city. The city sometimes needs a raise to, because everything goes up. But back to Councilmember Mays, if someone else took this building, they're still going to have to put renovations into it. I mean, because it's just to that point and I'm not sure there would be anybody that would do that, that would care enough about the building to put all that in there. So, that would be my concern if we didn't stay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I was, I was just going to ask, I, I think you have some gentleman here that are, we have some gentleman here that have prepared something and just think maybe it's time to let him see.
Mr. Pitya, before they present?
Just very quickly, because I too would like to hear what they have to say. I've been thinking about this all along and like everyone else, I've had comments received, good and bad. I do feel a little bit like Councilman Clear is that, there's always been my observation, having grown up here in Topeka as well, that we're quick to lose our identity in some of our historical buildings and locations in Topeka. Seems like we're, we're in a hurry to move forward without remembering what got us to where we are. And so, I'm concerned about the loss of, of the continuity of this building with what is happening in downtown Topeka. With the Plaza coming in and all those, we'll be in walking distance of that. We'll be a part of that showcase, if you will. What I would like to see though is maybe, What I would like to see, though, is maybe some consideration about, what is it we want in this plan? This has got a lot of nice artist renderings in here. I'm not sure we need everything that's in there. And I would be more interested in seeing what we can pare down maybe, but keep the solid part of this building in place and put it in a better position so that down the road, maybe we can add a little bit more, add a little bit more, but not a big chunk of $8.7 million all in one place. But I just, I just don't want to lose what we have in Topeka just because we want something new or to move into a different place. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Peach, good luck, Mr. Wizard.
Couple of things I want to add before I turn it over. First, I do want to recognize we have our project team here. We've got Dan Foltz with KBS, Joel Chris, Mark Schreiner with City of Topeka, our project manager, Willie Brooks, Cara, and Vance from Trainer Architects. And this has been the team that's helped us get here tonight, and they've done a fantastic job. So, just want to recognize them. And so, how did we get here? You know, this Councilman Lester asked, "Well, you know, I don't kick the can down the road. That's not why you brought me here. And sometimes the news I have to deliver to council is not always pleasant." And I think with the City Hall renovation, it's an example of that. When I got here, as Deputy City Manager mentioned, this was a mechanical electrical plumbing project to fix a sewer gas issue. And so, as I asked the project team, I said, "Well, how much of the building are we going to tear up as part of that?" "Well, a good bit." "Are we going to make the building code compliant?" We don't have a sprinkler system in City Hall. Some of the things that we make our private community do, all these different things that were not included in that project. And so, that led us to do this planning level assessment. What would it take to renovate City Hall? And so, we spent a little bit of money to get that planning assessment and do that budget. What I tell you happened during that time, I don't know if you remember, we had to ring City Hall with orange snow fencing because part of the facade was filling off. I mean, that gets to some of the masonry issues that we're seeing out there. We have a chiller that we have nursed through two heating seasons. Knock on wood, it was cooled this summer, but that chiller's on its last legs, and that's why we've made an investment to replace it. And then the last piece, you know, the fire service line that we had to dig up a part of the street and replace. And we fixed those things thinking about how do we get to the future. And so, as we get into the planning phase of this project, and we hired, you know, we went with a design-build team. This is a historic building, and it's an occupied building. So, we have to renovate this building much like we do our streets. We've got to be able to continue to have it function and serve the customers that come in our building. And so, when you see some of the costs, you talk about Cyrus or Federal Home Loan Bank, those are not occupied structures. So, there's different phasing that goes into the construction of this building to make it work while we continue to operate. And we did look at, you know, what is the cost to relocate staff while we renovate, and that adds rental cost. And so, the calculus was it was better to work in a phased approach. But other things that happened is we got into this design discussion. Well, we made some changes over in the Holiday Building to staff, and we were able to bring IT that was here in City Hall over to the Holiday Building. We also had the credit union moved out of City Hall. So, now we're renovating a City Hall that actually has less occupancy than when we started. And so, that prompted the questions, "Okay, we're going to renovate this building. What are the opportunities for that space?" And so, that led us down the path, are there other city services that we could move in out of this building? And that led us to looking at municipal court, you know, and talking with the court about how they operate and just some of the challenges with this setup, let us look at bringing them over. And so, that's just a real short narrative of how we got there. I'm going to turn it over to Vance, because I think it's real important to hear his perspective. This team has done a number of historic occupied building renovations, and I think that historic and occupied is key. It makes it very challenging, but they've come up with a really good product, so I'll turn it over to Vance.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Vance Kelly, and those of you who know me know that I have spent my entire career working on older and historic buildings. And I've been fortunate to be involved in a number of projects within the city of Topeka. And I love to talk about the history of our community and the historic buildings that we have and teaching people about the value of these historic buildings. Because the buildings that we're talking about, City Hall, you've nearly received 80 years of life out of this building. And many of the new buildings that we do build today aren't going to last you 80 years. They weren't designed to, they aren't being designed to provide that kind of life and that kind of service. So, when we talk about an older building, we talk about, well, there are things that have to happen through time. One is you try to maintain a building. We also know that maintenance budgets are tight, and through time, it doesn't always happen at the level that it should. And so, there's a cycle that comes with these older buildings where it reaches a point where something has to happen. In this particular case, it started with a mechanical electrical plumbing type project. And that's what starts to trigger then the discussion of what needs to be done. And with the investment that we're talking about today, it is intended to provide that 50- to 80-year life cycle within the same building. And so, that's important to remember. But let's talk about the future of City Hall. This is a newspaper article when it was first built, talking about a new, modern municipal office building means a better service to all taxpayers of the city of Topeka. There is a reason why civic projects were designed at this high caliber, and it's something that is important to remember as we talk about where we should be going here in the future. The future of City Hall is important. We are seeing an exciting time in the downtown, and we're seeing investment, private investment within the downtown area. And City Hall itself is in a great location, a block away from Kansas Avenue, the main street where a lot of activity is occurring. So, this is an opportunity for the city of Topeka itself to participate in keeping our downtown strong. When we started this project, we started the project as programming and planning. We were asked to take a very detailed look at this building to make sure that we understood what the needs of the building were. So, we started with a condition assessment, and that condition assessment was both on the outside and the inside. And on the outside, we were on lifts, and we did a stone-by-stone evaluation so we can talk about the deterioration that we're seeing and the work that needs to be done. We also did the same thing on the interior, making sure that we understood what existed, what was important, were there character-defining features of this building that should be preserved and really highlighted as part of the project? And what does it mean when you take on a mechanical electrical plumbing upgrade to a building? A lot of people don't understand that, yes, you can do the chiller package outside in an area way, and it has very little impact to the occupants of the building. The minute you try to bring that new service into those office areas, how do those new lines go? How do you improve the heating and air conditioning within the building? Means you're actually tearing up a lot of the building. That means you're tearing it up, and then you're having to put it back together. And as Jason and others have mentioned, that was the discussion of, as we put it back together, are we putting it back together correctly or not? So, what I wanted to do is show you a little bit about the, what we found when we looked at the building, and then talk about a potential vision for the building. What does it mean? If there's the investment in the downtown, is there an opportunity for us to look at this building and use the modern building standards and philosophies for a very efficient, modern office building? And compare that to this historic building that we have? And is there an opportunity to then capitalize on those character-defining features? Utilize the historic tax credit program that's out there in order to help fund the project in order to make it a reality? So, let me run through and take you on a very, very quick walkthrough of the building. All right, so as we walk up to the front door of City Hall, this is our existing entry plaza that we have. And as you walk through, you're going to see some very evidence of deterioration, both in the plaza, on the inside, and on the outside. When you walk in through the front doors, there's the existing entry lobby. As you walk through security, security is setting right out in front as a barrier in front of the doors. And then you have basically temporary systems furniture as a security station in front. As you come down the hall and the first floor, there's one of the clerk spaces on the left, and then the IT department that space on the right. When you look at the human resources office, there's their systems furniture, there's what their office looks like. On the left is the open office. When you work your way and wind your way around, then you find yourself in other small, very tight offices. And it's a situation where, as you look at recruiting and trying to find the best of the best to come and work and live here and provide service to us, you're looking at these types of environments that they, as employees, look at this. City Council has a presence within, of course, City Hall, and you have spaces there that you can go meet, and you've all experienced what it's like. Looking at legal, a couple of offices that you have. And you look at, again, taking an older building and how it's been used in the past. And because it wasn't, as the renovations have been done through time, they haven't been comprehensive renovations. They've been, let's, we have a department here that needs something, so let's tweak this, let's tweak that. And so, that's what you're going to see in a lot of the photographs here. Probation is in the building, and so, this is their space. Finance, as Deputy City Manager mentioned, you're looking for a new finance director, and the office to the right is the office that you'd be trying to recruit staff to move into. City Manager's office has a number of spaces within the building. You walk through from one small room to another to another in order to access the departments. You have an executive conference room. It's one of the few that is shared within the building. Then, of course, the vending that you see there. Let's move to the outside and do a quick walk around the building. We were up on lifts. We looked at a stone-by-stone evaluation, so we've recorded where the deterioration is. This is up high near the roof, the parapet wall that you see there, and you are going to see some displacement in some of the veneer stone. You'll see exfoliation as you walk around the building in certain areas of the stone. When you do a ground-level review, you can't always see a lot. So, the question was asked, you know, what happened between the earlier evaluation that was done compared to the evaluation that we've completed here? When you're getting up close and you start to see some deterioration like this, this half-moon cracks that are here, you can't always see those from the ground. When you're up high, you can. When you tap on them and look at them, all of a sudden, you can confirm what's going on. And in this particular case, because we've had water come in and high in the wall for years, it works its way down, and we have metal anchors that hold this stone veneer on. Because they're ferrous metal, they're not stainless steel. Back in '39 and '40 when this was built, stainless steel wasn't used. That metal corrodes and expands. And what that does is obviously that expansion forces enough to be able to pop off the face of the stone at those anchor points. So, this is an example of one of those changes from what the repairs were called for earlier with what we've identified. We've had repairs in the past that you've tried to take care of the building that have also failed over time. And so, those are some of the things that we documented as well. This is an example of a past repair that's failed. Plus, because the mortar joints have been caulked with sealant rather than mortar, then it traps the water that gets into the wall, which means then it causes deterioration of the stone. Rather than allowing that moisture to be able to evaporate out through that mortar joint, it's forced to try to evaporate out through the face of the stone. But what we found was the building has good bones. There's no question about it. This building was well-built. It is still well-built. There isn't anything wrong with the structure at all. What we've found is that because of deferred maintenance and because of many, many past renovation projects, you don't necessarily have a building that is looked at as something that conveys the pride that we have within the city of Topeka. And so, we were asked to then take a look at, well, we're competing with other cities. We're competing with other cities in order to bring top recruits in to work with us. We're competing with other cities for economic development. What are the other cities doing? What are the, what's the standard that they've set? How high have they set the bar with their civic buildings? And we were asked to take a look at what could happen. We were asked to take a look at modern standards as well, because if you use those modern standards with efficiencies within office systems and office spaces, then is that going to open up other opportunities that might exist within the building? Is there a way to make a stronger connection to the downtown with the investment that's going on in the downtown? Is there a way that we can encourage our constituents to come to City Hall more often? And when we, and when they do come to City Hall, can we create an environment that is less stressful and more inviting and enlightening for them? Can we create space for city staff and the departments that allow a better communication and collaboration process to occur within our offices? And that's a whole different mindset of design standards from when this building was built in 1939 and 1940. And so, we did that. We took, with that challenge, we stepped back and we said, "How can all this come together? And what can we do?" And so, what we want to do is share one vision that could possibly be something that the city of Topeka might be interested in. So, I'm going to show you just a very short video clip, and then we'll come back and
Switch to HD, I'm like one.
So, what we are trying to do is present the vision of what could happen within City Hall. And we're trying to do this at an early stage of the design process so that we can receive feedback on whether this is something that the city of Topeka is interested in pursuing. There's the discussion of... There was the discussion of what was the original intent. The original intent was mostly MEP. The interior spaces were secondary. The view of the repair costs for the exterior was minimal, but that's not what we're seeing here today. And so this is an opportunity for us to have a conversation. So what we've provided for you is, in the handout, you have not only the images of the interior and exterior, but we've also provided still images from the vision video, so that you can take these and see these and have these with you. And so what I wanted to do was make sure that because you haven't been able to participate in the design process to date, you weren't able to go through and work with us as we looked at space programming to understand the needs of this building and the Holiday Building, and look at where staff might best function. You weren't able to be a part of that design process. This is an opportunity for us to receive back from you some initial thoughts and guidance on the vision that you're seeing. So I'd really like to open it up, and I'll try to answer as many questions as I can, whether it's general in design or as specific as you'd like to go.
Thank you.
I think one thing that would be very helpful to everyone is to get an itemized budget. What's all this stuff cost? I mean, do we really need a snack bar? And if so, how much is that going to cost? That sort of thing. I think that would help a lot of everyone's, yes?
Deputy Mayor, with your, with the body's permission, could we invite Jeff White to come up and speak very briefly to financial overview? He has to get out of here.
Oh, sure.
And so, just trying to be respectful of his time.
Yes, no, understand.
He has to leave, and he may be able to answer some of those questions.
Well, you are the money man, so.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Jeff White with Columbia Capital. So I have a little background here. I've worked in this building for two stints, 98 to 01, and then came back and worked for the summer of 2012. And this conversation was going on at both of those points. We have to do something with this building. The council chambers don't work, the court doesn't work, the smell on the second floor has been around for 20 years. And the challenge in 98 to 01 is, probably should have done the work then, but the money wasn't there. We were on the cusp of a downgrade on our general obligation bonds. It was a challenging time fiscally. You know, fast forward to 2012, the same exact conversations were going on. Facilities folks would give me a tour, the chiller's not, you know, the mechanical room's kind of a nightmare, and literally folks would lay awake at night wondering whether the building would be cool the next day in the summer and hot the next day in the winter. And we found ourselves in the same spot. Very challenging fiscal times. We had to raise the mill levy more than 10% to keep the wheels on the bus, just coming out of recession, and there was no money. Had we done the upgrades in 98, 99, 2000, 2001, it might have cost $5 million instead of 16 or 18. And that's the situation you find yourself in today, that if you do choose to stay in this building and you don't act today, that cost is not going down, it's only going to go up as these maintenance costs turn into kind of catastrophic failures of the building. So my point tonight is to deliver this message to you. From that span, I can't speak from before 1998, but from that span going forward, the city's government has never been in better shape financially. And a lot of credit goes to you all, and certainly to staff and the partnership that you've had particularly over the last five years in rebuilding the city's fund balances, increasing the city's credit rating, normalizing the city's use of debt, and many congratulations go to you. You've all heard the expression, let's make hay while the sun's shining. From a financial perspective, the sun is shining, and nobody wants to do projects like this, right? I mean, I, this summer, my house, it's 15 years old, I got the incredible joy of replacing both my furnace and my water heater. Woo-hoo, you know? You would love to look at something shiny, you would love to go on a nice vacation. No, you get a brand-new box in the basement that you never look at, but you need it. Or you freeze this time of year, or you have very cold showers, or whatever the case is. And sadly, you find yourself in that spot today where, instead of talking about spending $18 million on a new park, or a new fire station, or something very visible in the community, you're talking about kind of putting it into the overhead. And that's a tough thing to do, but my message to you tonight is, you've put yourself in a great position financially. These kinds of costs do come around, they have to come around. You're here now, and the city can afford, if it wants, to do this project, whether it's a renovation, new construction, something like that. You know, I guess I would ask you, if it's not now, when? And how much more will it cost you when you get there? And what will the financial condition of the city, or the financial condition of the credit markets be if you delay this decision and wait a few more years? You can borrow for 30 years today at about 3.5%. We weren't able to say that in 2001, we weren't able to say that in 2012. So that's my, that's my message for you tonight is hopefully a little bit of reality, but also a little bit of hope, because again, you've put yourself in a great spot to deal with these kinds of issues.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. White, I thought you were maybe going to touch on the tax credits, the historical tax credits, is that your?
I can't speak to that, not my bailiwick.
Thank you.
So I would ask a question then. So could you spitball, so if, if we're going to borrow $18 million, and let's assume that the project is going to cost $26 million, because my assumption is that's just an estimate, not an actual bid. So how much are we, if we can do 3.5% on?
Yeah, if you, if you borrow for 20 years, it's about $50,000 a year per million dollars borrowed.
Okay.
If you borrow over 30 years, it's actually just incrementally higher, maybe $53,000 or $54,000 a year per million dollars borrowed. So if you, if it was 18 and 1/2 million dollars, you're talking about just south of $1 million a year, which is about, what, 8/10 of a mil, something like that for the city.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. White? Thank you so much for hanging out with us.
Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so back to a budget would be fantastic to know exactly what we're paying for, and then my assumption is these are your construction cost estimates and not actual bids to get this built?
So the project is being handled as a design-build project, and that means not only do you have your design team working on the images that you see, but we have the construction team doing the cost estimating. And that's why we do come together early with the clients to talk about what that budget is. So we're within the design development phase of the project. We do have a breakdown of costs, both the exterior and interior. We may not have the exact breakdown that we need, but that's the type of guidance we can give back, that if you can provide to us, then we can look at what those costs are.
So we would be safe to assume that it's not going to come back a third more?
So, well, the whole purpose of what we're trying to do here is establish a scope and a budget at the same time, and that both of those align, because we don't want to come back to you towards the end of the project to say, you know, we're.
We need more money.
We need more money.
Excellent. Questions, Ms. Clear.
I want to get down to the fun stuff. Okay, so we're on the council sheet here.
Okay.
Where's the office for council or assistant?
Okay, so if you go to page 37, if you look in the upper left-hand corner, adjacent to the existing mayor's office, you'll see the council office space. And what we've found from visiting other City Hall facilities is that the concept of providing lots of meeting space or desk space for council members, those spaces never get used. In fact, in one facility, we found that they were renovating this big office area that they had provided for council members, because now with cell phones and computers, nobody needs an office space to conduct council business by themselves. So it is smaller. And in fact, what I can tell you through the programming process, I think the majority of the departments, their space needs actually shrunk because of efficiencies and sharing of space, rather than having each department have their own kitchen area or coffee area. Shared space goes a long way in creating an efficient office, office building, and same goes with council space.
Okay, and then the first thing that popped out at me when I looked at this is the north wing lower level, those offices in the middle with no windows.
That's correct. So when you're in, when you're in the City Hall's lower level, in the middle, there are no windows there. And so that is an environment that what we try to do is, we try to bring in a higher level of light, so it doesn't feel dark and dingy. We try to bring in whatever light we can from the outside in the corridors and bring them into the space, but there are no windows in those, in the office areas for the municipal court.
So why can't you put windows there? Why can't you move them up against the windows?
So that, if, I'm going to move the cursor. If you can see the cursor right here, is that where you're talking? There's no windows?
No, we're looking at you.
It's tied. Oh, hey, here it comes.
Oh, okay. There we go, all right.
Yeah, those middle.
So if you're talking about right in here, these offices, so that's directly below the front entry of City Hall. That's the entry plaza. So that's where all your pavement is, leading to the front door. So it would be a little challenging to provide the windows. It doesn't mean off to the side we couldn't do something, but I can tell you that's, there's a cost involved in trying to.
So there aren't windows there now?
There are not windows there now. Now, over in the small courtroom, towards the northwest corner, we have existing windows that provide light into the courtroom. We are looking at providing natural light on the opposite side, on the west side, in the large courtroom. And what we're, the reason why we do try to bring light into a courtroom is, when you're dealing with difficult situations, you're there for court, the last thing you want to feel is like you are trapped. And so natural light goes a long way.
Well, Microsoft will provide some windows in those offices, too.
Too late, too late. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, ma'am.
When I, I did take up the offer of the one-on-one, and the introduction to me was real helpful. And I don't know, Vance, you weren't there, but either Doug or Jason, the idea of the fact that with the moving out of the credit union and the IT department, we, and others before, and downsizing in general, we have a lot of empty space now in City Hall. And so with this idea of, when you stepped back to renovate the building, it's kind of natural to say, well, why don't we bring some of those people back over from Holiday? Or are there other people we could, could move in to save money? And, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding was that you really did process through that and concluded that the choices that were made a few years ago in terms of getting departments over to Holiday that could interrelate well, development services, code compliance, neighborhood relations, that that was a fit, and that that mix was good enough that it should stay that way. And so there's a fair amount of extra space in City Hall that you kind of ran with to kind of do something with it. Could you, could you talk about that a little bit more, as well as a little more about those combined spaces, and where in this diagram there are spaces that aren't needed right now? So if we grew, or we had an internal auditor, or we had just the auditors coming and needed space, or people wanted to have meetings, us or anybody else, how, how this building would work for us?
Right. Well, let me, I'll start on the first floor, and as you walk in the front door, as you turn to the right, we have what we've been calling our community connection, because the question was, how can we encourage constituents to come to City Hall more often and spend more time there? That City Hall is, in a way, your front door to the community. And so there is an opportunity for people to learn about Topeka, the history, the programs, the sites that we have outside of the downtown. And this community connection space came about for a couple of reasons. One was because of the success of the top tank competition and the idea, and the question was, is there a way that the city can participate and potentially provide some of the finalists a space that they could show what they've been proposing? And maybe more than a pop-up, maybe it's a, it's a, it's a period of time that they're able to do their operation within this, this city facility. And that is good for them, but that's also good for the staff. It's good for the constituents who work downtown, who can come and utilize that service as well. The, the second came because we looked at what other cities were doing, and many cities are creating what's called indoor city markets. Now, we know we didn't have the space to do an entire city market, but is there an opportunity for us to take that concept and incorporate that in that first-floor space? And that first-floor space not only provided an obvious connection and easy access from within the building, but from that front entry plaza, we potentially can even have a connection directly to the outside, so that you can have people come in and going within the building easily, without disturbing the operations of the city needing to conduct its business. So within the building, then, as we looked at sharing space, I'm going to go up to the third floor. And so there are shared meeting rooms throughout the building, but we have, for example, in the mezzanine area towards the east side, we have a flexor meeting room here. We have a large staff and break room, which is intended to be a collaboration room. What we see within the design of offices today is people don't sit at, in their enclosed office anymore. People don't sit in their cubicle all the time. A lot of the time, decisions are made and meetings are held not in a meeting room, but in a collaboration space. And where do you collaborate? At home? Typically, people collaborate in the kitchen, when you go eat a cup of coffee or you're having your lunch. And so if we could create that large gathering space there, then it provides an opportunity for new ideas to come and communication to improve within the, within the city staff. But in reality, those, those spaces could change over time, if needed, because of increase in staff. Now, I don't necessarily think an increase in staff is something that the city typically likes to do, which means you want to run an operation as efficient as you can. And that's, that why, that's why I really think, as we looked at the space needs, a lot of the departments were able to do with less, less space than they currently have. And of course, sometimes existing buildings, older buildings, historic buildings are less efficient than a modern building, and when we use those standards for modern offices, all of a sudden, you can start to see some efficiencies there as well.
Other questions?
The security changed as well?
So security is, that's a, that's a good question. Security is one of the issues that we deal with within our public facilities all the time, because you can go from one extreme of having complete security, where everybody goes through a metal detector, an X-ray machine and everything, to no security whatsoever. And it's a balancing act, what you try to do. So we looked at the best practices that are out there today, and what we find is, when you're trying to encourage people to come within the City Hall, you do want a control point. So in this particular case, as you walk in the front door, we do have a security station. It's right to the side, off to the right. It's not out in the middle, it's not in a systems furniture desk, it's in a space that people would go up. And they would walk up to that window, and they would do very similar to what you have in the Holiday Building or here today. They would say, I have a meeting with the mayor. And they would call up to the mayor's office, and they would say, your appointment is here. That person then can take the elevator or the stair, and they can go up. And on each of those floors, you'll notice that we've created what we've called a security lobby. So that's this rectangle here. And I'm going to go back to the image right there. So I can come up the elevator or the stair, and I'm in a vestibule, but in order to access or get into the open offices that we have for the city, I need a key card or a fob, if I'm an employee, or I have to wait until the person I have a meeting with, or their staff, come and get me and escort me back. That allows a lot of flexibility and freedom to move, of course, staff to move freely within the building, without having the risk of people just walking through the building willy-nilly. So there is a level of security, but it's meant to create an inviting environment. Court, court. Court security, very good, okay. So the next level of security. Yes. So let's go. So let's go. Court security is, so when we looked at the operations within the building that required the highest level of security, it was the courts and probation. So we, we looked at the opportunity, is there space within the existing building that we can improve upon the services of the courts and make sure that probation can go there as well? Currently, anybody coming to the courts goes through all that high security, the metal detectors and, and the x-ray machine. And the idea here is, can we do the same thing? We couldn't fit that within the footprint of the lower level. So we did look at creating an addition, an entry vestibule addition, where people know they're coming to the courts, they come into the courts, there's a large lobby that provides the space for the x-ray machines and security, before they actually then walk in and go down into the courts. So by having those two services combined in an area of the building, then it provides that higher level security, separate from everybody else. The concept here is that same secure elevator lobby means that people from this area don't have access to the stair or the elevator in order to get up into the rest of the building. They will leave this lower level floor and go to the front door of City Hall in order to access other activities within City Hall.
Questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned having a door where they could exit out somewhere, whatever floor you're on. Couldn't they exit out or open the door and let somebody in?
So there's always that opportunity. So the city, from a management standpoint, can always determine what level of control. So within the entry plaza, if you see here, this door here off to the side is what goes directly into the community connection space. And the idea here is that people potentially could come and go. The idea here is that you could potentially have after-hours activities within that community connection space while the rest of City Hall is locked and secured. So that exterior door could provide that opportunity out, with after-hours activities in use with, with, in the building.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Kelly, I appreciate you coming up here tonight, and I really like the design that you and the team have come up with and everything you've tried to fit in here. My, my main problem is, like in my district, there's a place where people don't have a sidewalk. And, you know, we've been trying for 30 years probably to get a sidewalk, but we haven't been able to come up with $300,000 for a sidewalk. This is a place people walk every day, and I see this frankly as extravagant compared to our needs. I guess my question would be, I mean, it's not like you only have $100,000 right now, right? We have like 8.9 or something?
Right.
What could you do of what you've shown that we need to do with the existing budget?
And I, I think what we're looking for as part of the design process is feedback of what are the priorities? And, and, and receiving that kind of feedback allows us then to go back, evaluate it against the budget, to say, we can accomplish this, this, and this for the current budget. If we had this much more, we could accomplish this. So this, what we've done today is set up so that we can have that type of conversation. And it's not that you have to provide the feedback immediately here. There's an opportunity for one-on-one meetings or small group meetings, so that we can go into higher level detail about the design, or that you can get feedback from your constituents and, and report to the city manager's office of what.
I, I can give you some feedback right now, and this is not being flippant, it's just when I see these kind of extravagant quarters for city council meetings, it's just my feeling as leaders, we frankly should be kind of last. You know, I think a lot of people would rather we meet less, you know, and not as nice a place. It's just, that's honestly my feeling, that. This is just one of those projects I, I have a lot of respect, I, you know, the, the people in the company that you're working with, it's just, you know, if we had hundreds of million, millions of dollars setting around, or if someone would want to come in and donate the extra money for this, I would be all for it. It's just simply, we have so many needs around here. I think if we took this 10 million and put in our water mains, we could probably bin the cost, you know, we're spending a million dollars a year right now fixing water main breaks, we could probably start saving a million dollars a year if we attacked it at that rate. So that's, that's a real problem I'm having. I, I don't have any problem with your design, it looks fantastic. It's just simply, there are so many needs we have we already can't afford, so, for what it's worth. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor and Councilman, or Emerson, sorry. I just wanted to add a little more color to that. We, we certainly have the ability, because we have, we've asked Trainer and KBS to break out costs for us by sort of major scope area. So we could certainly go down that path. And Councilman Emerson, you and I had this conversation one-on-one today, and I certainly appreciate your candor with everything.
What about word, use the word heck?
But certainly, one of the points I made to you was that the council chambers, for example, are the council chambers of the capital city of Kansas. And they look like they look. I, I don't think we should be ashamed to say it's worth spending a million dollars, whatever the number turns out to be, for council chambers for the capital city of Kansas that are going to last 40 or 50 years. I think that's a reasonable investment. And, you know, we, we had that discussion. We also discussed that staff did agree that if you met less, we would, we took that vote, and that's, that also seemed appropriate.
You betcha, yeah, okay. And I, as you know, I respectfully disagree with, with the need, but I, I understand what you're saying. I just, again, I, I, I just, you know, always been taught, it's always been kind of a tenet of mine, that, you know, the leaders should be the last to get things, we should have the worst. You know, the workers, great, give them a great environment, give them the tools they need, build us something efficient, but we don't need anything fancy for us. So, thanks.
How much have we paid for this already? This book full of beautiful ideas that we can't afford. I mean, I'm just, I, I appreciate the work that's gone into this, but this should have been stopped a long time ago. This is, this is too nice for us. I mean, we have, we have folks that have huge needs in this community. So, I mean, I, I understand the concept and what we're trying to do, and I appreciate the layouts, but, I mean, I agree, we have people that have been waiting for sidewalks for 30 years. So it's really hard for me to go back and tell people, hey, we want to have a really nice City Hall, but screw your neighborhood. That's, that's tough. Yes, sir.
I guess that's, I, I think, I think this is wonderful work, I do. I truly do. And, and I'm with, with Tony, if, if we could, we would. But I, I, I keep hearing this from, from, heard it a little from you, heard it from, you know, we, so we can go back, so we can go back, so we can see. I thought we had a, I mean, we had a, a proposed budget, 8.2, wasn't it, that we approved? I, I, I'm confused of why we, I keep hearing this, we can go back to see what it is that you want, see what it is that, that, that is important to you. What was important to us was if we had an 8.2 budget, what can we do for that amount? If you're following me? And I guess that's what my frustration is, is my frustration is, is, I don't know, for lack of a better word, just the arrogance of all of a sudden coming back and asking us for, for another 8.9 million dollars. And I'm not necessarily talking to you, I'm just saying, you know, I, I hear in my community, similar to what Tony said, I hear people talking to me, you know, get my streets fixed, economic development, lower taxes, you know, be, be fiscally responsible, you know, you know, home, the homeless, you know, bring industry here. You know, I don't see anybody talking to me about, let's get City Hall so damn nice so I can go down there every, at least once a week and, and, and do things down there. It's just not, not what, what's on the radar. So there again, I, I think this is fantastic work, but, 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 you know, it's gonna have to be scaled down drastically to, to get any type of support from me. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think the thing that I want to say related to that is that as we look at what our needs are, we've done that, we've looked at what the needs are to the city, and we looked at where departments need to be located together. We also are looking at what's possible. And I think that's what we were looking at here related to this. This is what's possible, and if it's a policy priority for the governing body to move forward relative to this, then that's what we'll do. But obviously, you're expressing your concerns relative to that it isn't a priority, and it's not the policy that you want to pursue, or some of you. It's hard to, you know, count exactly heads, but as we look at the comments that you make, we look at what's expected. You know, if we don't pursue what the options are, at the end of the day, we can get second-guess ourselves as to whether or not that's what we wanted to do or not do. And at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we've explored the options, and we settle on the level that we're willing to accept. And that's really what we're looking at doing. Where do we want to settle as to what's good enough for our community, what's good enough for the look of our City Hall? We're looking at what we consider to be putting ourselves on par with what we see in suburbs of other cities, what other cities are doing with the looks of their City Hall. And if that's not a priority, then we adjust. But if we had not looked at that, this is the time to look at that, and we would have been kicking ourselves down the road for not having done that. It's important that we've explored this. I think that that's the case that we needed to make and needed to know from you, is this direction that we want to go? Because we can, we can pare this down, and we can provide some basic improvements to our City Hall and work with the budget, you know, we'll figure out what we need to do in order to be able to accomplish that. If there's truly an amendment that needs to be made in order to accomplish that, we bring that back to you. And, you know, we have a lot of that information. So that's kind of where I look at it. This is a process, and the process required us to do this in order to be able to walk away from it if it's not your expectation.
With all due respect, Brent, all due respect, this was not the time. You know, the time was not after we asked our constituents to go vote and approve a half-cent sales tax to improve our street, and then a week later, come out publicly to say we need, want to do another 8.9 million dollars, you know, to renovate City Hall. I mean, I have to disagree. This was not the time to do that. With all due respect, that's just my opinion.
I, I respect that comment, but the, the work has been ongoing for an extensive period of time. The information, the numbers were finally put together within the last week. That's why it wasn't on a preliminary agenda for consideration. This is something that we've finally completed to the point where we could present, and needed to present it.
Mr. Kelly?
I think this has a lot of bells and whistles. I think you did a, a good job of what could be. I just don't think we're ready there, we're, we're there yet. But sitting in, in this chair for 13 years and continuously hearing this conversation, I think there's things that we should consider doing that need to be done. You know, we've seen some of the foundation coming off. We, I, I don't know how much the VAC system's gonna last, because I've been sitting in this chair 13 years, and every year, we're praying another year, another year. So I would be willing to see what we really, really need to do in those aspects. Now, I know Jason talked about, well, we don't want to tear all this up to put in this lane, you know, put in this line or whatever. So we would need to know that and the cost behind that. But I think our constituents are looking at, you know, the necessities that need to be done. And, and, and I think that's our duty, is to bring that forward. I don't have a problem doing that. But when I start saying, oh, well, we're gonna have this nice shop over here, the county's taking theirs out, because there's just all the traffic that flows through there, they found it, that it's cheaper just to go ahead and get vending machines, you know, and we're just right across the street. You know, and I, and I think there's just things, I would like a list of what we really need to do, you know, what really needs to be done and the cost of that. I, I know that there's, there's a lot of that. And I know that Mayor Button looked at different office spaces and different things, and I know we've had some shifting of things, but, you know, just, just some of the things that we can afford to do to beautify. You know, we didn't have security on, on the first floor, and everybody, you know, they wanted that person right there when people come right through that door. It had to be right there, couldn't be no side window, it had to be right there, you know, not so they couldn't go up the stairs, you know. And, and I know that one of the things that they really had talked about was having that person come and get your guest, you know, and that's why they wanted that security there. I don't know if that really, really happens. You know, sometimes they let them in, or they just assume, you know, well, they're going to the mayor's office, you know, that for that security officer to keep a better track. You know, at the state, we're, we're responsible for our person getting them in and out of the building, and, and so, so to do that. But I would like to see, without the bells and whistles, what exactly we really, really need. I really like sharing the chambers with the municipal court, because that means that it's always, you know, something going on in here, and as opposed to just a dead courtroom. I, I think the new chambers is nice, I don't like it, I like my little corner, I don't like change, I have three exits that I can get the heck out if I need to. There, I'd be squished in between these two, you know, so I couldn't get in anywhere. I mean, just, just different, different things, things like that. And I, and I tell you, I, I, I'm gonna say this, we are the capital city. But people don't look at us to be a big city. And I think when we start putting those big ideals, we had a city manager that wanted to drive a Jag every day. We're not a big city like that. We are Topeka, we're down-to-earth, homegrown, corn-fed, we're just down to earth. We don't need all the bells and whistles. What your staff has done is great, but I would just like to see what we really, really need and what we can accomplish with what we've set aside. Because I, I, I do understand that there's some renovations that, that need to be done. The cracks in, in, the landscaping, you know, we, we could do that, you know. But that's, that's where I'm at. And I, and I, and I look at too, you know, I have to hear, I, I serve the load of modern income, that pay taxes, that make it from day to day, or they're wondering if they can get their medicine, you know. So, so they're not interested in coming down here, just hanging out at City Hall, you know. They're not interested in that. They don't even want to come down here on clean slate day when we're trying to get them down here, you know. But, but we appreciate all the work that you've done. I do have some follow-through, and I, I kind of disagree with you on the city council chambers, is because we don't have offices. So in order to meet with a constituent, I like to bring them up to City Hall where I'm safe. And I have them going through the security, and they know, because our constituents are of all kind of walks of life, you know, and so it's a safe haven for me. Sometimes, if it's at nighttime and I can't get here, I'll take them to the fire station, you know, or have them meet me down there, or something like that. Because, you know, we have to have a safe area to meet people that are not always in favor of what we have to say or they don't understand. So I think that's very important, that we have that, because we don't, we don't have any type of nothing. You know, we all share this one computer, all share conference room, and so, so I, I kind of, even with the technology, we still need that, because other than that, we'll have them showing up at our door. But thank you, and thank you again. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Kelly, as well. I think unanimously, everybody appreciates the work that you've done. I haven't heard anyone try to second-guess the work itself or the designs. And that's what I meant with my comments earlier, is I still think that this building has a place in how we present this city to our constituents, everybody. The ones that have meant a much and those that don't have much, and to the visitors. I still think that we're a part of this revitalization downtown. And so saying that, that was my request, is that we need to look at how best to present ourselves as a governing body. That doesn't mean that we have to be the shiniest dollar on, on the floor, but we do have to spruce ourselves up. And looking at your pictures and so forth, I noticed that when I come downtown to visit with the city manager or the mayor, walking in, I see all the cracks. with the city manager or the mayor, walking in, I see all the cracks, I see all those kinds of things, and it doesn't seem like it should be that way for our capital city, period. I've gone to much smaller communities, and they take pride in what they have. And that's what I want us to do, is take pride in what we have, but make sure that we're not getting something with all the bells and whistles that we won't ever really see or use, but that we do what we can with the money that we had previously authorized. And I say we, I didn't have anything to do with that, this guy did, so he's the one. So I do think that the vision that is presented is something that we still have to keep in mind with everything that we do. And that is that maybe that we don't get everything done in the first round, maybe down the road we look at the next phase, but we still have to take care of the basics. And that's what I think, is what I hear around here, is that take care of the basics, make sure this building continues, and then as we can afford the nicer spaces, then we look at the possibilities of those. But I still want to make sure that we don't get to the point where we're saying, we can't afford this, we can't do this, we can't do anything, and then we end up doing nothing. Just like Councilman or woman Ortiz said, for 13 years, we've been having the same conversation. And I think that this body, when I first joined it in January, when we had our retreat, I think what I heard from this group was, we want to get things done. We don't want to kick things down the road and keep putting off what should be done. So that's what I hope that we can get to, is to get to that point where we can do what we can afford, but don't just give up and say we can't do anything. Thank you.
I would agree, there's nothing that says we can't mothball chunks of space and build out, you know, I love this test kitchen, they have no idea how successful it would really be in City Hall. I mean, lots of folks I know are terrified to come here to begin with, but there's nothing that says we can't mothball that space and then build that out at some point in the future. So maybe with a partnership from a nonprofit or a private entity. Ms. Hillary.
I agree with you on that, and/or if we can challenge ourselves in our own heads, and then as we talk to constituents to say we've got this extra space, maybe there's something that could use that space in a complimentary way that we haven't thought of yet, and that's one reason they're engaging us, I think. I also want to pick up on, react to what Councilman Emerson said, because I was the executive director of a nonprofit when we redid the Buchanan School, and we didn't have a lot of money. But people wanted to do it right. Nonetheless, we had the bank of windows next to the wall, and then we had the little divided things, and there was the folks that had the back, then the ones with the wall, or with the windows. And I was the executive director, I said, I don't have to have a window, if you want a window, you have a window. And I had one of the little cubbies in the back. And in time, the staff said, we want, the principal's office came open, and they said, it's important to us that you be in a nice place, we want that for you. And I think our constituents feel that way about us as the city council as well, and we need to not forget that there's a balance of what's just right and what's too much. People also are funny, if you think about it, they want us to save money, and I do too, for sure. But we're really, people are very retro, they are proud of our history, and they're proud of the things that we have, and they do want to take care of them. And so as we have those conversations to say, this was the idea, and here's some of the pros and cons, is it important enough to do it, and how could we do it, rather than maybe take sides in these early conversations and see what they say. Like I said, I really want to watch the money, I put it on my Facebook, and all these people said they thought it was a good idea. So just throw some of those thoughts out there from being that humble person who said, give me the bat, you know, the spot with no window next to the wall.
So let's talk about the schedule. So where are we at with this? Because everybody keeps saying this is early, 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 but these look like pretty solid plans that are way further along the process than I would consider early. So could one of you talk about the schedule and where we're at in the process of doing any kind of renovation? I know that some of the construction has already started, but just give us an idea where we're at.
Let me start from the standpoint from a design perspective. So we're in, within the design process, you start with schematic design, where you try to understand what the needs are, you try to figure out how they might fit within the building. We're into the next step, which was design development, where you get into a little more detail, because you now know the furniture needs, you know the space needs, you know the special needs of each of the departments, and that's what we've started to put down on paper. But we're, you know, we're at that sort of midpoint of design development, of saying, we think everybody fits, and here's how they fit. So it's still part of the design. We haven't even started construction documents for any of this work.
So you're looking for feedback within the next two weeks, a month? What's the next step from here, for us, anyway?
Deputy Mayor, I'll jump in and answer that. I think any feed, we've gotten a lot of good feedback tonight, so thank you. Any additional feedback you might have over the next couple of weeks, as noted, we have some costs broken out, and we'll be able to kind of look and see what we can pull, what makes sense, because sometimes it may make sense to pull something from the direction we've received, but it doesn't necessarily make sense from an efficiency standpoint in terms of what we're going to do with the rest of the building. So we'll go back and try to figure out where to balance those things and try to come back with some different ideas for you.
Fantastic. Ms. Claire.
I keep, the broken window keeps going through my head, because what, I had one constituent tell me that, you know, he doesn't make much money, keeps his house just, almost to where it's, you know, just above code, but he said, by gosh, I take pride in the city. I don't want to see my City Hall with cracks in it and walk in, and that gives them pride. So they don't worry about the street, they don't worry about their sidewalk as much as they would worry about City Hall looking like crap. I mean, you know, they love the Capitol, they're very proud of that. And so that's what I heard from my constituents. You know, yeah, I need a sidewalk, but it's not as important as the way I feel and the way people look at our city. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Is this available for us to share with our constituents on a webpage somewhere? If not, could it be so we could, I mean, because I would like to push this out and get their thoughts and feelings as well. So if that's doable, that would be fantastic, because, I mean, the comments I've gotten thus far have not been positive. However, you know, I don't know that they've seen all this level of detail, so, you know, there is that. We haven't shared the status of where some things are at, that might sway some people's opinions. So, yes, sir.
Deputy Mayor, I'll push that electronic version that Vance has given us out to the body.
Fantastic, thank you. Files, files, questions, comments?
You're going to push it out to us, will it be on the website, or will it be in place where we can direct?
Yes.
Yes, that would be, maybe both, but I'd like to train him to go to the website.
Okay. Does everybody want to take a quick break before we go on to announcements?
No.
No break? Okay. Okay.